Good evening to you all and welcome to our second regular council meeting in the month of January 2021. I want to thank the council members for being present this evening. As we'll note in just a few minutes, we are in a different mode this evening. So we'll begin our meeting though by our regular order and that would be to ask the clerk if she will to do a roll call at this time. Ms. Gibson, are you available to do a roll call? Okay, while she is getting set up, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, this is Rodney, town manager. Ms. Gibson shouldn't be with us pretty soon. She needed to do some swearing in of staff, so she should be back with us any moment now.
Okay. If not, I believe that's something I could probably do myself, but I'll wait
I would say go ahead and proceed, Mr. Mayor, and I will let her know that that has been done already.
Okay, very good. Yeah, so if you will, please answer when I call your name. Obviously, I'm Ken Marshman, the mayor, present, and Ms. Behringer.
Here.
Mr. Vance.
Present.
Mr. Dellinger. Mr. Singleton.
Here.
And Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Okay, thank you. I declare that all members are present and available for the meeting this evening. So the meeting this evening is being conducted as a remote meeting pursuant to North Carolina Section Law 2020-3. Be reminded that whenever a council member cannot be seen on the screen, that member will identify him or herself by name prior to asking questions and participating in deliberations or making motions or proposing amendments and voting. So that will be the process for our virtual meeting. At this time, I'm going to ask you, if you can stand where you are, I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance to be followed by an invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. This evening for our invocation, I believe and think that he is with us, but it's been my privilege to contact one of the police department chaplains through our police chief, Mr. Dwayne Calvin, who is slated and scheduled to lead us in our invocation this evening. So, Mr. Calvin, are you available for us? Yes, Mr. Calvin, can you hear me okay? Could you unmute yourself?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I just introduced you. You're one of the chaplains with the Garner Police Department, and I'm deeply indebted for you to join us this evening. And if you will at this time, please, sir, would you lead us in our invocation?
Certainly, my pleasure. Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Father, first, let me just say thank you. On behalf of all who are gathered here today, thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for your care of the town of Garner and for the measure of health that we experience, and we need to definitely fulfill your callings, and we come before you with a great task tonight. But we first want to start by saying thank you and inviting you into this meeting. And we're praying that you would grant us wisdom to understand and to govern well, a sense of well-being, and an understanding of the true needs of the people, and that we would have a spirit of teamwork and unity to conduct the tasks that you have before us tonight. Praying that you would help us to have confidence in our decision-making, and then when it's all said and done, that the right things will be done, that the right things will be said, and that ultimately you'll find glory in the labor of everyone who's gathered here tonight. We thank you in advance for your presence, and we look forward to a great evening of understanding. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Calvin, probably should say Reverend Calvin, I guess, for leading us, and thank you for your volunteering with our police department. It means a lot to, certainly to me and the council, and also, I'm sure, to the police department. So thank you again for using your time to come and lead us. Okay, at this time, I'd like to share some comments that will be part of the guide for our evening meeting, though this relates to a particular section. So there's an online form that's available for persons to participate in the meeting or to submit written comments on items not included on the agenda. As far as I know, no speakers have signed up at this time, but if there's anyone who would like to make a petition or comment, now would be the proper time to do that. And I would ask a town clerk if she's available, if she has any indication of any persons who have either signed up or submitted any comments.
No, sir, we've had no one sign up under petitions and comments.
Okay, thank you so much. So we will move along in our agenda, and the next item, council, is the adoption of the agenda. Before I ask you to vote, please note if you will that the staff has requested that item, I believe it's 1-1, yeah, contract approval for construction projects at Meadowbrook and Jürgen. That item has been removed from the agenda. So I wanted you to know that, as I will now entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Second, okay, so moved by Mr. Matthews, and I've forgotten who seconded that. Was it Mr.?
I did, great.
Okay, Mr. Singleton, yes, thank you, sir. Okay, okay, we will now vote on adoption of the agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
And Pro Tim Behringer.
Ms. Behringer, can you, you need to unmute.
Sorry, sorry, aye.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
And Councilmember Van.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The agenda has been adopted by the council for this evening, and we will proceed accordingly. The next item on the agenda is under the heading of presentations, and I'm not aware of any, so I will ask the council and clerk if there are any that I am not aware of.
I'm not aware of any, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Gibson. The next item is the consent agenda. All of the council members should have received that and noted the items on there. So unless somebody feels the need to pull an item from that agenda, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. Vance and seconded by Mr. Matthews, and I will ask Ms. Gibson to call the roll for approval of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Dellinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Van.
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So the consent agenda has been approved, and thank you, council, for that. Right, we will move along now to the next item on our agenda, which will be some public hearings. And in conjunction with those, I need to provide some additional information. If she hasn't already done so, our clerk will probably leave the meeting at this time to swear in witnesses for the quasi-judicial hearings for items H1 and H3. For all public hearings on the agenda, written comments may be submitted up to 24 hours after the public hearing. Please submit written comments by email to s gibson@garnernc.gov. Of course, that's the email address for our town clerk. Under state law, the parties are entitled to a fair hearing. Do any council members have a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, or do you have any, have you had any ex parte communications, or had any close familial business or other association relationship with an affected person, or have a financial interest in the outcome? If so, would you so indicate at this time? Okay, hearing none. Let me mention that at the beginning, this is a fact-finding hearing, and only competent material and substantial evidence that is not repetitive is allowed. Only expert witnesses based on training and experience may testify as to impacts on property values, traffic safety, or noise levels. Council members are only allowed to receive factual information during this hearing and are not allowed to discuss the case outside of the hearing. So at this time, we will call the initial case, CUP SP 2012, Sod Building Phase 2, and I will call on our planner, Ms. Allison Jones, if she will, to make her presentation at this time.
Good evening.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, Jeff Treisenberg, Planning Director. Staff members were not able to get sworn ahead of time, so if we could have Ms. Gibson swear us in, that would be great.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, are you available to do that at this time?
Yes, sir. If staff could please raise their right hand, you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I know, Ms. Jones, you obviously have just been sworn in, but I must ask you, do you consent to the remote meeting in which this is being conducted?
I do.
Okay, thank you very much. If you will, proceed at this time.
Okay, let me share my screen. I'm sorry, guys. All right, so I'm in presenting Sod Building 2, excuse me, Sod Building Phase 2, CUP SP 2012. Applicant and owner is Broadhaven Properties, Matthew Sod, is located at 100 Brickstill Lane. The tract size is about three acres. The planning commission heard this case at their December 21st meeting, and is before you guys, you all tonight, excuse me. As I previously mentioned, the tract size is three acres. The proposed use is a flex space office warehouse. There's no minimum lot size, and the front side, excuse me, the front setback's 30 feet, and the corner is 30 feet as well, and the rear is a zero, inside is zero. And here is an overall picture of a site plan. The building will be constructed of brick and metal siding. There's no open space required for this project as it is a commercial development. Landscaping buffer requirements. This plan's meeting the requirement of 10% with existing vegetation to remain undisturbed. The perimeter buffers, the 7.5-foot perimeter buffer for the east and south side of the project. The street buffer is a 15-foot buffer along Brickstill Lane and Ranon Road frontage. Brickstill Lane will have an enhanced street buffer for screening, and the street trees are being provided every 40 feet of average along Ranon Road in Brickstill Lane. Lighting. Lighting for this site has been shown in conformance with the UDO, as well as meeting staff recommendations for LED fixtures. All fixtures have zero uplight, low glare, and warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000K. The inspections department, together with the fire review, and approved the plan. Parking is based on one per every three square feet of gross floor area and one per every two employees on max shift, but not less than one per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. They're required to have 12 parking spaces, one accessible, and they're providing 12 with one accessible. Stormwater management. Sod Building Phase 2 is a commercial development site that is not located within the watershed protection area. This site is subject to storm water quality requirements for nitrogen only. A previous study was done for Wildwood Business Park East to demonstrate that detaining water would be detrimental to downstream watershed. So no water quantity is required at this site. The development of this site remains under 3.6 pounds per acre per year threshold for nitrogen, and therefore, no offset payment is required with development of the site. Water and sewer. Connection to City of Raleigh Public Sanitary Sewer and Water System will occur through existing infrastructure. Roads and sidewalk. The building will be served by a single driveway off of Brickstill Lane. Both frontage streets are currently built to their ultimate section on Brickstill Lane, and sidewalks intended to only be installed on the north side of the road and is therefore not required along the site frontage. Sufficient sidewalk to provide a connection from the building to public sidewalk on the north side of the street will be included in this development. Street lighting will be installed along Ranon Road. The 2018 Garner Forest Plan does not provide any roadway, bicycle, or pedestrian or transit improvements along Ranon Road. This project, as proposed, may be found in conformity with the transportation plan. A review of the Parks Recreation and Culture Resources Comprehensive Master Plan revealed no plane recommendations in this project area. Therefore, this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with the Parks Recreation and Culture Resources Comprehensive Master Plan. Site plan conformity with the, after sufficient review and plan revision, staff finds that this project, as proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO so long as the following project-specific conditions are met. Prior to the issuance of building permit, the payment of engineering inspection fees shall be paid to Town of Garner, and prior to the issuance of building permit, payment of public utility fees shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. The planning commission reviewed this request at their December 22nd, excuse me, 21st, 2020 meeting by unanimous vote. The planning commission confirmed staff's findings in Section 5 that CUP SP 2012, Sod Building Phase 2, is in conformity with adopted town planning policies. Staff recommendations for the site plan request, CUP SP 2012, conform to highlight in the worksheet of the following pages. Please refer to page 52 in your packet for the motion to approve or deny CUP SP 2012, also known as the Sod Building Phase 2. And that concludes my presentation. If anyone has any questions, I am here to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, and I will give each council member an opportunity to ask questions before we get to our next witness. So I'll begin with Mr. Matthews. Do you have any questions, sir?
Not at this time, sir.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
Not right now, thank you.
Mr. Vance?
No, I have no questions at this time.
Okay, thanks, sir. And Ms. Behringer?
No, sir, no questions.
Okay. We are ready, I believe, to call our next witness. Did you want to introduce that person, Ms. Jones, or I have a name on my list here that I can call as well? Do you know who?
I think it may be Matthew Sod, either Keith, I'm not sure who's first, or I know both of them signed up.
Okay, so at this point, I will call Mr. Keith Roberts unless he prefers to go in a different order.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
By the way, excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Roberts, I must, I must ask you as a matter of what we're doing here, that have you been sworn this evening, and do you consent to this remote meeting?
I do, and I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. You can proceed at this time, sir.
Thank you, appreciate your time tonight. Thank you to Planning Department, Ms. Jones, for a great presentation there, and she basically covered all site aspects very well. I do not really have anything to add. It's a fairly simple project, small 6,000 square foot flex building, but I am here and available for questions, and I think Mr. Sod is also available on the phone if you have any questions for him.
Okay, council, if it's okay with you, I'll go ahead and maybe recognize Mr. Sod, and then we can turn to questions for either Mr. Roberts or Mr. Sod, is that okay?
Okay.
Mr. Sod, if you're on the phone and can hear me, I assume you are, have you been sworn tonight, sir, and do you also commit, excuse me, consent to the remote meeting?
Yes, sir, I do, and I have.
Okay, sir, we'd be pleased to hear any comments or presentation you have at this time, sir.
I concur with Keith Roberts, and Ms. Jones, I think has been presented very well, so I have no further comments unless you guys have any questions.
Okay, so since both Mr. Roberts and Mr. Sod are now available to the council, I will call on council members for any questions or comments they care to make. I'll begin with Mr. Vance.
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ms. Behringer?
No questions.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
No, sir, no questions.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Okay, and Mr. Matthews?
Well presented, no question.
Okay, well, thank you, council, and are there, those are the only persons that I had listed as wanting to speak for this application. Are there others who are either online or otherwise would let us know that they have been sworn and would like to testify? Okay, hearing none, and Ms. Gibson, you're not aware of any others, I'm supposing?
No, sir, I'm not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, council, I will ask you this time if there are any comments you care to make. I think you've already had a chance to ask questions, but if they're a last-minute question, feel free to do so. So I'll begin with Mr. Singleton. Any questions or comments before we call for a motion?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dellinger?
None, just good to see more growth out in the area of this type that fits perfectly, so that's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. And Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Sod has always brought great things to the town, and I'm sure this won't be any exception, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Vance?
No, sir, I have no further questions.
Okay, and Ms. Behringer?
No, no questions. Good to hear from Mr. Sod again, haven't seen him in a while.
Okay, well, unless there are other items to be brought forward on this matter, I believe that at this point it would be appropriate to entertain a motion on this request.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council accept the staff statements regarding the plant consistency in Section 7 of this report as our own, and find the application meets the 10 criteria in Section 3.1414.D., and therefore approve CUP SP 2012, Sod Building Phase 2, with the two conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by the staff.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vance, for that motion, and we do have a proper second. I believe that was Mr. Matthews, probably. Okay, so, council, I will ask you if you're ready to vote. Just before we do, are there any other items or comments to make? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll at this time. Please vote aye if you approve the motion, and please vote nay if you disapprove.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Van?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes unanimously and is approved, and I too commend you, Mr. Sod, for this project, and those who present it. Well done, and we look forward to you being able to move ahead with that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council members.
Okay, thank you all. So, council, the next item on our agenda, find this, number two is an annexation petition, ANX 2020. This is located at 105 Shore Drive, and Mr. Banford, I believe, is available if we need him to present, but this is an item that was continued from our January 4 meeting, so I'm going to declare this time that this hearing is reopened from the continuance of January 4. And if there's any further presentation from Mr. Banford, who submitted at the initial meeting, we will hear from him, and then we have at least one witness that we need to hear from. Is there anything else from Mr. Banford?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, unless you'd like me to summarize the case again.
Why don't you do that briefly, if you will?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, point of personal concern.
Yes.
I would like to, at this time, ask council to recuse me from this item, as I have a financial interest in it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. I had thought I made myself a note to be reminding council that at the last meeting, upon his request, council did approve that. So upon his request this evening, I will ask council, if you will, to vote regarding his request to be recused. So, Ms. Clerk, if you will call the roll on that issue?
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Van?
Aye.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Mr. Banford, you have been sworn, and you consent also to the remote meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you'll give us a brief summary, thank you.
Sure. I will pull up the presentation. This is annexation case 20-20. The property is located at 105 Shore Drive, and this is a street off of Buffalo Road near Lake Benson. The property is approximately .7 acres in Zoning of the property is residential 20. Use of the property is single-family residential. There's an existing home on the property now. And the proposed effective date for annexation, if this moves forward tonight, would be January the 19th, and I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, at this point, I think rather than calling on each council member individually, I will just ask if there's any one of the council members who wishes to ask Mr. Banford a question, and we'll go from there. and we'll go from there. Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Banford. I have on my notes that we do have the applicant who wishes to speak to the council. And so we welcome Ms. Rebecca Leckie. And so would you proceed at this time, ma'am?
Hi, Mayor and Town Council. Hi, I'd like to speak to the council's questions regarding my request for annexation. Before I do, I'd like the council to know that I've made Garner my home for almost 15 years now. I'm an active resident. I serve on the boards of Garner Elite Softball and the Garner Optimus Club, and I'm also a member of the Garner Area Historical Society. Although the application for annexation did not require a reason, I'd like to provide and answer the council's questions as to why I'd like to be annexed. At the council meeting on January 4, 2021, Mr. Banford stated that the satellite annexation is reviewed on a case-by-case basis. As each annexation is considered on its own merits and convenient access to town services, there's no precedent to be set for all voluntary annexations. To further speak to Mr. Singleton's concern over precedents, every voluntary annexation is judged on its own merit when received and reviewed by staff and when presented during a public hearing. For this particular property, the staff recommended approval of this annexation based on the facts and merits of that petition and adherence to a North Carolina law. According to North Carolina case law, cities and towns are not required to provide services to properties that voluntarily annex if delivery, delivery of those services is overly burdensome, as it's presumed the applicant would have evaluated this prior to the petitioning for annexation. A satellite annexation petition is required when requesting the annexation of property that does not abut directly against the primary corporate limits. The application must be signed by all the property owners. The area to be annexed must meet these certain criteria. So one, it cannot be more than three miles from the primary corporate limits of annexing municipality. This property is 600 feet from the town limits. This is only 6% of the maximum distance required by law. Number two, it cannot be closer to another municipality's primary corporate limits. The next closest municipality border, boundary to this property is Peakway Arena and Ted Ten and Fanny Brown Road, which is 3.1 miles away. And three, the annexing municipality must be able to provide the same services to the satellite portion as it does the primary corporate limits. So in the previous hearing, in response to the inquiry from council members, staff confirmed that the affirmed that delivery of town versus town services to this property was not only possible, but would not be inconvenient nor burdensome, given this property's close proximity, 600 feet, to neighborhoods and properties that already receive the town services. Voluntary annexation of this property has no impact on adjoining or nearby properties and does not require that they also be annexed, and it does not affect the property values taxes at all. This annexation will also result in additional town tax revenue for the town. Annexing this property will generate an additional 1,500 to 2,000 per year to the town. Over 10 years, including property value appreciation, this could be over 25,000 of free money to the town of Garner to use for parks, police, road improvements, which is a clear benefit to the town for public safety and welfare for the residents. So it seems that the town would benefit from this voluntary annexation. They would actually want to encourage voluntary annexations, particularly for properties that have tax values that exceed $300,000. Lakeshore has been an ETJ since at least 1988. And properties brought into the municipalities at ETJ are brought in not just to expand the town's planning and zoning control, but also with the hope of future inclusion into the town limits for the added tax revenue. Having lived in the town limits for almost 15 years, I've grown accustomed to the services provided by the town of Garner, and I would hate to lose these. Here are my main reasons. Like, I narrowed it down for five for you guys, but there are a lot more that I want to be annexed. So one, trash pickup, waste disposals needed, you have to pay for yourself. The town provides superior additional, superior additional services that you can't just easily purchase from a waste vendor. So lathe removals, spring cleaning pickups, those aren't provided by the waste services. So these services cost at least $500 a year, and that's just for the regular waste. That's not for all of the additional items. If I was annexed into the town limits, my property taxes to town would cover the regular trash pickup and recycling, but also the special unprepared waste. All-Star, which is the town's solid waste contractor, already provides service to at least one other home on Shore Drive. So this would make it clearly, easily serviceable by the town's contract with All-Star. Number two, the Garner Police Department. Garner Police Department is professional, honorable, respected, accredited law enforcement agency. Having attended the Garner Citizens Police Academy, I value the special services that they supply to their residents. Given the location of this property near Lake Benson and several neighborhoods already served by the Garner Police Department, the delivery of police services is convenient because it's in the middle of town. Also because of the location to the property in the heart of Garner, in the event of an emergency, the Garner Police Department would respond and arrive a lot more quickly than the County Sheriff's Department. How important could it be between a one-minute and a four-minute response time be? Could be the difference between life and death. And with the events that have occurred recently, I want the fastest and best police response possible. Also because the Garner Police Department is committed to service, professionalism, training, accountability, and a time when the arrival of police at your home can put you at risk for poorly trained or impulsive police officers, I trust the Garner Police Department to do the right thing and the right way if I ever call on them. As someone who values peace of mind, safety, this alone is worth being in the town of Garner. Reason three, access to town activities. Town offers many amenities, classes, activities at discount rates to town residents. For many years, I've enjoyed these activities. I've participated. I'd like to continue to do so at the current town rate throughout, provided through my property taxes. Number four, the right to vote. I'm an active voter. I volunteer at the polls for early voting in election days. Not being able to vote for those that ultimately represent all neighborhoods around me would be disenfranchising. I would be located in the center of Garner with the decisions of the town council directly affecting me, yet not able to represent myself with a vote. The right to vote and have a voice that is listened to and matters are important to me and the quality of life in our community. Is that worth being in the town of Garner? Absolutely, it is to me. For this, and I won't bore you for many, many more reasons, I'd like to stay as a resident in the town of Garner when I move over to my new home. All these services would be provided to me appropriately through additional property taxes and a net revenue gain to the town. I would appreciate the council staff recommendation, accepting the staff's recommendation to approve my voluntary annexation. I appreciate your time, and if you have any further questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for, for that thorough presentation, and I appreciate your comments. So I will, at this time, hold the council to see if they have questions for you. And I will begin at this point with Mr. Matthews.
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll go to Mr. Vance.
No questions.
Okay, I'll go to Ms. Behringer.
Yes, just one question. The other property on Shore Drive that is served by All-Star, have they been at, that property been annexed into the town?
No.
Okay, do you know what the reason is that All-Star services? Is that an individual contract?
I think they're individual contracts.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and Mr. Singleton?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Leckie, I think that's all the questions that the council has at this point in time. I'm not aware of any other persons who expect to give testimony in this case. Mr. Banford, are you aware, or Ms. Leckie, the one? Are there others out there? Okay, hearing, hearing none. Then the request before the council is to adopt the annexation ordinance 2021-5004. And hearing no other comments or questions from council, I will ask for a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a comment first. I think I have some uneasiness about the application. It's legal, it's all, all, it's, I know that they went through the proper procedure, there's nothing wrong with that at all. I just think there's another reason, and I think we were asked to annex this property. And, and, you know, Mr. Dellinger, to be elected official and leaving the town limits, and this property's not the town limits, so it needs to be in the town limits. So that's an uneasy feeling, knowing that when I moved in Garner, I bought a house to town limits, and as I know others have, that served now and is served previously. So it's just not something I personally, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have done it. But that's just me. That's the uneasiness I have. It's, that's, that's the main reason. If, if, if Mr. Dellinger weren't on the council and they bought this house, and there would be no need to annex. That's the uneasiness that I have.
And I answered that because...
It's all legal, there's nothing wrong with it at all. And I understand that, but that's the uneasiness that I have with being asked to do it.
Ms. Leckie, I'll come back to you for sure. And so let me, let me see if other council members have a question. Okay, go, go ahead and respond if you'd like to at this time. Ms. Leckie?
Sure. So one of my main concerns when, I mean, being in the complete middle of town, it never occurred to me when we were buying the property that it was not in the town limits. And when it did, my first concern was, I'm not going to be able to vote for the town council. That was my first. And so I did research and found that we could annex. So there was that, but then all these other things started to build. So those are my main reasons. And yes, Damon is on the council, and he would be able to remain council. But I will tell you, these were my main concerns, and this is me as an applicant speaking to that for you. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, I understand, because you would think where it's located, that if, I mean, it's surrounded by Garner. But then...
Exactly. It never occurred to me that it would be outside of the limits.
But the other side of Buffalo Road, all those homes are outside of Garner. They're, they're surrounded by Garner too, but they're outside the, they're not annexed except for one at, at one corner. So that was just the uneasiness that I have. I'm just, I'm just stating it out there. Because if somebody, you know, watching this said, well, that's why you did this, that's why you did that. I just wanted to explain it. So that's, I've explained it. And I know that y'all looked for houses for some time. I talked to Damon about it. He told me, y'all have looked for houses in Garner for some time. And sometimes you get into bid wars and things, you think you got a house, and it just gets taken away. So I know y'all have been looking for a while.
Okay, and I would just comment while other council members maybe are pondering, and we are, we are asking for a motion, and I think this council needs to go on record making a motion here this evening. I do think that a reasonable request has been made. Mr. Dellinger was certainly elected by the citizens of Garner. And I accept the reasons that have been presented here. I know and respect any concerns a council member has, including Mr. Singleton. But I for one, hope the council would give every reasonable consideration to this request, just like you would any other. And we have done, obviously, some other satellite annexations from time to time. So one way or the other, we need, we need to get a motion on this and go ahead and, and resolve this. It was before us, obviously, a couple of weeks ago, we continued it. I think it's only reasonable to, to go ahead and take what I hope and I believe is proper action in the case. So the floor is still open for, for, for a motion on this matter. I will entertain that at this time, or any other comment from other council members.
Ms. Leckie, I want to say that I understand the dilemma that you're in, because I had a similar one about 11 years ago before I moved here. There was a home outside of the town limits, and the family was leaning toward that one. But once I found out that, okay, I would not be able to sit on the commissions and boards I was a part of, then that would have harmed this decision-making process. It is a, a tough decision to make and understand and appreciate the thorough briefing that you provided to us, really do. And I understand that, and I feel the struggle of the council as well. It is, it is one that is a tough decision to be made. Again, the detail which you provided was, I would say, exceptional, very good, very well laid out. And it is one decision that is going to be a, a hard one to make for myself. Similar fashion to, what, what, what is this, I understand the mayor's position. Also, I understand Gray's position, and it places us in a dilemma. It does. With that being said, are we ready for the motion, Mr. Mayor?
I am indeed. I think a motion is in order at this time, sir.
Okay, all right. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the annexation ordinance 2021-5004.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, thank you. And Mr. Singleton, I believe you seconded the motion, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so motion's properly made and seconded. Any other comments from council before we vote? Hearing none, then I will ask the clerk to call the roll. If you approve of the motion, please say aye. If you disapprove, say no.
Mayor Prokton Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
And Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Okay, I declare as mayor that the motion has been properly passed by the four voting members. And thank you, council. I know some of your difficulties in coming to this decision. And Ms. Leckie, thank you for your able presentation before us. I am pleased that this action was taken, and hopefully it'll work well for you and for all concerned. Thank you for your time. Okay. All right, council, we will move, thank you, we will move to the next section of our agenda. I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor, to point, just a personal privilege, a brief comment to the council. I just want to say, I appreciate the council's very serious consideration and diligence on this. It is incumbent upon, you know, something as mundane as a satellite annexation, things we approve all the time. It is incumbent upon us to be more, have a higher threshold of scrutiny for our elected officials. And it makes it harder to do things the right way sometimes and go through the right processes. But I'm appreciative of the decision you came to, but also appreciative of, of the scrutiny and diligence that you all, and thought you've given to this hearing and matter. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dellinger, for those, for those comments. Well stated. Okay, council, are we ready to move forward to item three of the agenda? CUP SP 2009 Rand Village Apartments. This will be another quasi-judicial hearing. And Ms. Jones, do I need to read my intro before I call on testimony? I believe, or was the reading previously satisfactory?
No, you do not have to read the intro again. You'll just have to confirm that each witness has been sworn in and consents to the remote meeting.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. And so I believe, Mr. Trezenberg, are you the first presenter in this case?
Yes, I will be.
So let me ask you, sir, have you been properly sworn, and do you consent to the remote hearing?
I have, and I do.
Thank you, sir. And at this time, I will be pleased to recognize you for your presentation.
Alrighty, so this hearing here tonight is for Rand Village Apartments. The case number is CUP SP 2009. And so this is following closely on the original subdivision approval that you all heard a few months ago. So again, the applicant is Cambridge Properties. Specifically, the application was signed by Mr. Barrett Blackburn. The tract totals 18.34 acres. The planning commission met and considered this item at their meeting on December 21st. The use would be for apartments, 264 units. The minimum lot size for this zoning district was 5,000 square feet with setbacks of 35 in the front, 25 in the rear, 15 feet to the side, and 25 on any corner. So here is the site plan. You see US Highway 401 to the left of your screen, and then that's Caddy Road coming across the southern portion of the screen. You'll see a dash... Uh, you'll see a dashed, uh, outline of a, what looks to be a fairly large circle. That is the current, uh, well, probably not current anymore since we approved the text amendment. Uh, but that was the, uh, fall zone setback for the telecommunication tower that is on the site. Uh, so you can see that there are no, uh, living units within that, uh, fall zone, just parking in the other, uh, non-habitable type improvements. Uh, so the site is very narrow at 401. They do have a sign easement up there, but, uh, all of the apartment units are further back into the site. Uh, buildings will be constructed of fiber cement and brick veneer. Uh, this parcel is covered by the US 7401 overlay. Uh, so our interpretation of that overlay at, uh, a staff level is that all buildings should be at least 50% masonry finishes. So you'll see that some of these, depending on topo, may have a fourth floor. But generally they're a mix of, uh, three and four-story buildings with a fourth floor where the topography allows. The development does include 12.5% of its acreage as improved or preserved, uh, environmental open space, exceeding the minimum requirement of 10%. For landscaping and buffering requirements, the tree cover being conserved is at 13.8% of the site, again, exceeding that requirement of 10%. The perimeter buffers, we have a 35-foot buffer to the north and south and a 25-foot buffer to the east. Uh, the street buffers are seven and a half feet along the 401 corridor and 15 feet along Caddy Road. And street trees are being provided on average of one for every 40 feet of, uh, a public or private street. The lighting for the site has been shown in conformance with the UDO as well as meeting our staff guidelines for LED fixtures. Those fixtures have zero uplight, uh, low glare, excuse me, and a warm white light exhibiting a color temperature of no more than 4,000 Kelvin. The inspections department, together with the fire department, has reviewed and preliminarily approved these plans. For parking, uh, the parking is based for apartments on the number of bedrooms in each unit, uh, plus a provision for guest parking. Uh, so typically the ordinance would require 522. They have, uh, proposed 425. This is, uh, minus 18.6% deviation pursuant to the authorized flexibility of Section 7.4.0C. Uh, the applicant has presented a parking study, uh, following up on, on the requirements of that section, which suggests that 396 spaces would be sufficient. Uh, when we analyze that number, that equated to basically one and a half spaces per unit, uh, but no extra provision for guest parking. Uh, that being said, there were some revisions that the applicant went back and made and has, uh, added 29 more spaces, uh, to that. Uh, there is additional space on the site, um, if addition is warranted in the future. They find out that it's not enough. And just for your reference, the largest deviation currently granted by council has been approximately minus 15% at Evolve Timber Creek. The site does not contain any FEMA designated flood planes. It's largely upland habitat areas. Rand Village is subject to stormwater quality requirements for nitrogen and 85% total suspended solid removal, as well as water quantity requirements for the 110 and 25-year storms. The development plan does propose a wet retention pond, uh, in the site plan. That was to the north, um, top part of the screen. That will entreat, uh, that impervious surface area. And that device will satisfy all of the previous requirements, apart from a nitrogen offset payment also being required that they will make to the mitigation bank. Uh, the development will connect to City of Water, uh, City of Raleigh Public Water and Sewer. Those, uh, utilities have been expanding in this area as development has occurred. The frontage improvements were approved as part of the conditional use subdivision you heard previously. But just as a reminder, uh, they include the road frontage along 401 being widened with curb gutter and sidewalk within the existing right-of-way. Uh, the development will not have direct access to 401. All of the access will be onto Caddy. Uh, and a dedicated right turn lane from northbound 401 onto Caddy will be installed. And Caddy Road will also be widened, uh, on the north side. McCullers Walk was doing the opposite side, uh, again, to include curb gutter and sidewalk with some additional right-of-way. Plan conformity, the 2018 Garner Forward Transportation Plan recommends Fayetteville Road as a six-lane divided arterial. Uh, the plan did not provide any specific recommendations for bike and ped facilities, but with the proposed roadway widening and construction of the curb gutter and sidewalk, uh, this project may be considered consistent with the recommendations of that plan. Uh, we reviewed the Parks Rec Open Space and Greenways Master Plan and did not see any immediate plan recommendations in this area. Uh, therefore, this project as proposed may also be considered with that plan. And finally, after sufficient review and plan revisions, staff does find that this project is now proposed, may be considered consistent with the regulations of the UDO so long as a parking, uh, reduction deviation is granted by the town council and the following project-specific conditions are met. Uh, number one, prior to issuance of the building permit, payment of engineering inspection fees must be paid. Two, prior issuance of, uh, prior to issuance of the building permit, proof of the nitrogen offset payment, uh, must be provided. And I'm sorry, there's only four. Uh, this should be three, prior to issuance of a building permit, payment of public utilities shall be paid to the City of Raleigh. And four, all public road improvements on the north side of Caddy Road shall be completed prior to the first residential certificate of occupancy, uh, being granted in this complex. Uh, the planning commission reviewed this request at their December 21st meeting by unanimous vote. Uh, they did confirm staff's findings that it is in conformity with adopted town plans and policies. Uh, there was considerable discussion about the parking. However, they knew that that was going to be discussed further here tonight. But, um, if, if found to be comfortable with the parking levels provided, uh, they did agree that it does meet plans and policies. So you do have, um, a motion on page 68 of your packet regarding approval or denial of the special use permit. Uh, Mr. Jay Priestor is here tonight, uh, coordinating, I believe, uh, the presentation from the applicants. Again, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, uh, for staff at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Treesenberg. Excuse me. Uh, Mr. Treesenberg, thank you for your presentation. Um, I'm, I'm going to sort of poll the, uh, council members. And at this time, I recognize Mr. Dallinger, if any questions he may have.
Uh, just a quick question. What, uh, I was taking a lot of notes. Um, what's the plan for the intersection of Caddy Road and 401? Is that going to be a right turn only out of there? I know we've got the Costco coming on the other side. What's the, what's the plan for that intersection there?
If I recall correctly, and I'll defer to Mr. Johnson if I'm wrong, um, this Caddy Road will be a kind of a three-quarter intersection. So you'll be able to make a left over, uh, southbound into Caddy Road. But if you want to go southbound on 401, you'll need to make a right and then do a, uh, a U-turn.
Where's that U, where's the U-turn?
Uh, the U-turn is going to be a little further north and will be constructed as part of the 401 Assemblage Project, if I'm not mistaken. Or there might be, there might be one a little closer than that.
Okay.
I believe it was, yeah, I believe it was constructed by McCullers Lock, actually.
And, and the, the parking, um, what was the reason given for that large of a deviation? I didn't hear a reason.
Just that they conducted their, they have their own parking study, uh, performed on products that they have built similarly in other jurisdictions. But, uh, that would be a question for them to better answer.
Okay. That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Matthews, any questions?
I have none at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Dallinger's asked some of the questions I have. I believe per the, uh, exiting or when we moved Caddy Road and head north, I believe that U-turn is not very far down there because one reason that, uh, we decided to see, put the fire station, rescue EMS there is that they, because they would have to do, to make the same movement to go out and it would, I believe, a short distance. Um, question about Caddy Road, uh, Mr. Treesenberg, state, we state here that they're responsible for the north side. And I believe using the McCullers Apartments, project is responsible for the south side of Caddy Road. Is that correct?
Yes, um, for, for some of it. And I think that's a little bit complicated. They are doing some widening. This project also has some.
Property sale.
Improvements on the south side as well. So I know McCullers was at least doing, uh, some pavement improvements and some pavement widening. I thought they were doing some curb, but maybe just not the sidewalk, but I could be wrong on that.
So all the improvement from Caddy Road can be, I know the north side had to be, uh, completed before the first, uh, CO is issued. What about the south side? I mean, we're going to be doing half of Caddy Road and come back later and do the other half? Or we can, or they can try to do that in a, uh, in a coordinated effort to do it all at one time?
Um, again, I'll defer to them specifically on that. But I know when, uh, when we approved it for the subdivision, we, we said that each side had to be finished prior to a CO associated with that side. But I would think that they would probably want to take advantage of some synergies to knock it all out at once.
Okay. And I will second what Mr. Dallinger said about the parking deduction. I know they make surveys of their current properties and I understand all that. But what did Draven have to change in the next five to 10 years? Wouldn't it let the cars become real popular and everybody decides to have one? And I'm sitting here thinking we're going to be short of parking spaces by 18, 18.3% or whatever it was. So that's just a concern. I know we can make reductions and we've done reductions before. But these continual reductions, somewhere along the line, I got a feeling we're going to look back and say, gosh, why did we do that? That's my fault. I'm finished, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Singleton. I'll go to, uh, uh, Ms. Behringer. Any questions?
I have the same concerns as Mr. Dallinger and Mr. Singleton about the parking situation. I realize that they do have their programs where they can, um, do their studies and find out what works in general. But, uh, when you think of even visitors coming to, to see friends, uh, where are they going to park? And they did mention, I believe, that they had provided for, there would be some provision for parking on the site somewhere should it be needed. It just concerns me that, that they continue to reduce the parking when we have found, uh, reason to acquire the number of parking spaces we have. So that's all.
Okay. And Mr. Vance?
Uh, questions have been asked and, uh, is the, is the developer here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we're going to recognize, uh, him or, uh, several other folks who wish to testify at this time before we are finished with Mr. Treesenberg.
Okay, well, questions asked answered. I'll wait for the developer.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Uh, thank you, Ms. Treesenberg. I have several names on here. I don't know if you want to introduce, uh, who is coming next? Or is it Mr. Priestor who's going to, uh, uh, lay out how he wants to present the, the case with, uh, other witnesses? Is that right?
Yes, I would defer to him.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Priestor, I will recognize you at this time. And I will ask you, sir, uh, if you have been sworn in, you consent to this remote hearing, sir?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is Jay Priestor. I have not been sworn in. And we have several other speakers, uh, joining us this evening that need to be sworn in as well.
Okay, I believe it will be proper. Uh, Ms. Gibson, could we do that at this time?
Yes, we can. Uh, other than Mr. Priestor, who else do we have that needs to be sworn?
Um, I believe Wyatt Bone has been sworn in, uh, Jeff Okanadel has been sworn in. But also speaking is Barrett Blackburn, uh, Seth Coker and Ron DeCunzman.
Okay. Would each of you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly, sincerely, truly declare and affirm that the evidence you provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Do you? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Gibson. So, uh, again, uh, Mr. Priestor, I will ask you for the record at least. I know you've been sworn in. Do you consent, sir, to the remote meeting?
Uh, Jay Priestor consents to the remote meeting.
Okay. And I think I'm supposed to ask you to give your name and your address, if you don't mind doing that.
Sure. Jay Priestor, Cambridge Properties, 831 East Morehead Street, Charlotte, North Carolina, 223.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, please proceed, if you will.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, members of the town council, um, to have the opportunity to speak with you this evening. And also have a PowerPoint, um, that I'd like to bring up, um, to the screen here. Control of this. Okay. Uh, this is our project team and also speakers available this evening. Uh, with this, uh, being a quasi judicial process and having a following after Jeff did a very good job and thorough presentation of our project, um, I would like to, um, uh, go through a brief PowerPoint. And this is very similar to what y'all saw, uh, last month with our project across the street, which was the Costco and Chick-fil-A project.
Jay, could I interrupt you briefly? Am I the only one that, uh, I don't believe I see on my screen the presentation you're speaking out of? Do other council members have that on your screen?
Yeah, same problem. Yes, sir. Same, same problem. Uh, we see something that's, uh, got a date of, I don't know, the fifth on it.
Right, same here.
Jay, we're seeing your team's screen is what is being shared.
Thank you for, I've got some more help here in the office that's. Okay, how does that look now?
Yes, sir. Looks good.
Okay, great. Much better. Yes, thank you.
Great. This is, um, uh, very similar to our presentation from last month uh, because we took the macro approach to developing really four quadrants here at the intersection of 401 and 1010. Just to recap briefly, project that was approved last week is, uh, or last month is the commercial component with Costco and Chick-fil-A. Uh, the component in front of you tonight is the, what we call Caddy Road North. And then we also have the Caddy Road South, um, which we will hopefully be in front of your, um, board again in the next few months to present that site plan. We did zone all these properties at, uh, the same time. But now we're sequentially going through a site plan approval process specific to each site. And so I hope to, uh, answer some of your questions that you had, um, following Jeff's presentation. So a little bit, uh, zoomed in, give you another, uh, perspective of the site and location. So of course, Caddy North on the lower right-hand corner of your screen is the project that was being presented. The technical plan that Jeff had just, um, shown, uh, is on the screen now. Uh, this outlines, uh, open space, which Jeff, uh, uh, shared that we exceed the ordinance of 10% um, or 12 and a half percent, as well as exceeding the tree safe, uh, component of 10% as well. Um, the item that we are focused on here is, that is the amount is allowed under the ordinance. And, excuse me, the 10% open space is based upon. and, excuse me, the 10% open space is based upon usable and active open space. And when we got into the ordinance, we actually had additional, what we call amenity space or natural space. And this is very important for us in this area because we are in the Swift Creek watershed and we did want to be very sensitive to it. And this also plays into an aspect of the parking. So we are actually at 56%, what we call natural and community areas, and this allows us to really have a maximum or keep our impervious area to a minimum of about 44%. So we're more pervious here than impervious, and that's part of this development and what we're trying to achieve here. This is, I want to talk briefly about the road improvements since I know this came up. What we're doing for this side of the road or for this specific project is we're adding in an additional right turn lane on 401 that is shown in green on your screen, and then we're adding additional asphalt along Caddy Road, which is also shown in green. So that shows you the additional road work that will be done. The existing turn movement on Caddy Road is a protected left end to the project from 401, so you can make a left end from 401, but you cannot make a left going south on 401. And that's the existing condition there today. The U-turn bulb is about 800 feet to the north that is existing today. That was put in as a part of the McCullers Walk project, so that will have that is already in place. The areas in blue next to the green on your screen is where we're adding in the streetlights, parking, excuse me, a planting strip with street trees, and then also a sidewalk. And that sidewalk will connect to the advanced, or to the AutoZone sidewalk there, and then we're stubbing the sidewalk going north to the next project as that gets developed. The improvements to the south will match this, so we call that Caddy South, which will come in front of your board hopefully later this year, very soon. And those project, and those improvements will be completed at that time. We are extending a water line, domestic water line from 401, which will go all the way to the end of our property. That will be on the Caddy South side of the road. So there is additional work being done that will also serve Caddy North. That will connect into the water line that McCullers Walk has extended up Caddy Road. To the questions, while we're speaking about Caddy Road, Hally Group, who developed McCullers, is in the process of milling and overlay, overlaying all of Caddy Road from their project all the way to 401. We have a very good working relationship with that developer and we've been working in conjunction to try to tie our improvements in together. I believe Councilman Singleton mentioned it would make a lot of sense to sequence improvements together, and that's exactly our thought and our plan here at this project to do so. Thought this was a very important slide to share. Caddy Road is, with the McCullers Walk development, is also now really able to connect to 1010 Road, and this is very strategic connection point to allow traffic to avoid 401. We all recognize that's a strategic corridor, one into Raleigh, but it allows potentially a safer movement at certain peaks of times of the day to go through the McCullers neighborhood and then access 1010 Road via that way. Jeff explained very well our commitments during the rezoning process, which we have are meeting and exceeding as a part of this project, especially is attuned to our elements of our design and elevations of our buildings, exceeding 50% masonry for all the buildings, consistent architectural design, as well as a number of amenities that we're committed to during that project, dog parks, open space. We've obviously exceeded those. Here are the, here's, Jeff explained, we have two different building heights. We have a four-story and a three-story. In his presentation, he showed the four-story building. Also wanted to share with you a three-story building. Here's the four-story building and an elevation of the clubhouse. Wanted to touch on the parking, and at this time, I'm going to let a couple of the experts, and I'll call them up individual, individually to speak to each component. As Jeff mentioned, the original traffic study that we had, the parking study we had Kimmon's group do, did suggest that one and a half parking spaces per unit was sufficient, and we did go back and increase that to another, an additional 29 parking spaces. So we are up to 425 parking spaces. That doesn't include some garages, and even more than that, we do have oversized garages that we plan to do here that accommodates people who maybe have a bigger vehicle or also want to use their garage for, not only for their car, but for other bikes or whatever else they may need additional storage for. The important thing to look at when you are looking at a parking ratio for multifamily development is how many bedrooms are there. And what we have here, which is very unique, is we have no three-bedroom units. We are focused on a majority of one-bedroom units and then secondarily the two-bedroom units. So we have 144 one-bedroom units and 122 two-bedroom units. So what we need to look at is how many spaces per unit. We're actually at 1.61 spaces per unit. And then also, we're 1.1 space per bedroom. So it's really the bedroom component that we need to focus on. And it also, when I will call up Seth Coker shortly, who is the ultimate developer for the apartments, he will be the ultimate owner and developer for this component. Cambridge's development view is to master plan larger development projects as we have done on this, both the north side with this project, the south side with the project to come, and then last month when we did the commercial component. We are the ultimate owner and developer for the commercial component. We like to control who develops the property around us, so that's why we brought in Comet, and I'm going to let him, Seth Coker with Comet Development, who will develop that component, and let him speak to his experience and ownership and how they view things. But prior to introducing Jeff, I would like for Jeff Okonadel to speak to his parking analysis that he did as our first expert testimony. Jeff, are you available?
I am.
All right. Can you please start by giving a little bit of background about yourself, how many years you've been in traffic engineering, and, and then jump into your study?
Sure, sure. I'll give my name and address. Jeff Okonadel, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh, North Carolina, 270, 27607. I have been sworn in and I do consent to the online format, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All that, all that out of the, in the record? Yeah, we, we, I've been, I'm a registered professional engineer, professional traffic operations engineer, been doing this for 20, over 20 years now, almost 21 years, actually, yeah, almost 21 years now. So I've done various parking studies in the past. We, for this study, we looked at the ITE Parking Generation Manual, and we also looked at some area developments, data on some area developments, and found that, actually, the ratio that could be used per unit is actually, could be lower than 1.5. We found it around that, based on the area developments and based on the parking generation manual itself, it was approximately in the, in the 1.3, 1.32 ratio. So we felt comfortable recommending 1.5, and since they've increased parking to 1.6 spaces per unit, it's, it's even better for, I think, I think it'll work fine based on the information that we had.
Thank you, Jeff. That was a good background and summary of your report. Next expert witness I would like to call is Rhonda, who is Vice President of Operations for Bell Partners Property Management. They manage a lot of, if not all of, Comets multifamily projects in the Carolinas, but also thousands of units in the southeast. And would like for, Rhonda, if you could please introduce yourself and give us a quick background of your experience.
Absolutely. Thanks, Jay. Hi, Rhonda Kunsman here. I have been sworn in and agree to be here tonight, sir. Thank you. So I'm a VP of Operations for Bell Partners. Currently, I oversee 30-plus communities in the Triangle and the Triad, many to which are new construction. I wanted to provide a different perspective from the management side because I'm sure you don't hear that as often. I will say currently, specifically in the Triangle, we're seeing an influx of residents moving from the north, which I'm sure all of you are well aware of. With that, we've seen northerners actually do not typically have the average of two vehicles per household. It's actually quite less than that. So as we're seeing in these newer communities and we have an influx of northern residents, we see less parking needed actually, which has been pretty interesting, especially if you're used to suburban deals. So I will say that in addition to seeing kind of a less requirement on a per household, we've also seen that many folks are choosing to work from home. That's pre-COVID, if you can believe that. And so quite frankly, we don't see many couples needing the two vehicles. So they will have one vehicle even if they're in a two-bedroom. We've also seen where the majority of folks now are needing extra space at home to work from home. So a lot of one-occupant households are actually choosing two bedrooms. So it's just kind of interesting because when I look at recent built lease-ups that I'm doing, we are actually on a per-bed or per-unit basis a little higher than what we've seen in the area with similar residential makeup. So there are an average of like 1.1 per bed, 1.03 per bed. So it's actually a lot less than what we are assuming. I would say in addition to that, the, what we're asking for as far as the 1.6 per unit, that's assuming we're 100% occupied all the time. So essentially, an average occupancy is around 94%. So for us, that's 248 units, which is 1.9 spaces per unit, or 360 beds, which is actually 1.18 per bed. So when I look at it and I look at parking ratios and get asked the question, would we have enough parking? I look at it from also an occupancy standpoint. So we would essentially exceed the thresholds at this community versus other that I'm currently managing.
Very good, Rhonda. Thank you for that presentation. In addition, Rhonda had a couple of letters provided by her onsite property managers. These are for specific communities. We're submitting as a record as they weren't able to speak this evening, but did provide two additional letters for projects that are in the vicinity of Garner with similar or less parking spaces per unit. So this one is from the, it's up on the screen, is from the property manager for Elevate, which is in Briar Creek. That is 1.06 spaces per bedroom, where we are 1.11 spaces per bedroom. A letter specifically stating there has not been any issues. Here is another one at Meridian at Nichols Plaza. That's 1.03. And this is another property manager with a similar experience who's dealing with the issues. And that's what the people who know. It's not, you know, us, it's the people who manage this every day and are leasing these units out because they're the ones who get complaints in this business. So I did want to also mention before I turn it over to Seth to speak as our next expert testimony, we do have all the additional open space that I mentioned, the amenity space of 56%. It was not, it did not come down for us as an issue of, we don't have this space, or asking for something that, because we needed an exception. We're doing it because we, we have experience in what is needed. And I'm going to turn it over to Seth as our next expert to talk not only about the parking, but maybe a little bit about his experience. Seth, can you please introduce yourself and give us a brief background on Comet?
Sure. I'm Seth Coker, 127 North Green Street, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27401. I have been sworn in and I do accept this remote meeting format. Thank you to everybody who's spoken so far and the questions we've heard before. I think it's been a great presentation. So I have built between Comet and my previous company, which I was in a partner in, built and owned a little over 5,000 apartments over the last 20 years. And really, as towards some of the points that have already been mentioned here, as the tenant mix in apartments has shifted more away from families to retirees to renters by choice, you've really seen the need for parking go down. And so probably, I don't know, five years ago, we kind of arrived at thinking that 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom is really what we need given our resident mix. And so that's really what I told the engineers with Bowler to really target as we laid this out. And they did a great job getting the parking convenient to the buildings. And I really do like to try to maximize green spaces as much as I can on our projects, and I think we were able to do that here. We do have plenty of room where we could add additional parking if we needed it. I just really don't feel that we do. Think if there's any other points I wanted to try to make. And that's, that's really it. And I mean, and I'm very happy to answer any questions or try to address any concerns if I can. Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. I did want to pull up here, Seth is a humble guy, but he's done quite a number of projects, and I wanted to show a handful of projects that Seth has developed. Most of these are in the Raleigh area, North Carolina, and one in South Carolina. But if you look at all these parking ratios, we are on the, on the highest side of all of these. So we're at 1.1 space per bedroom, and that exceeds all of these. And the other thing that Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, but you are a long-term owner of these units?
Yeah, so I will, I will say that my first 15 years, I didn't sell any apartments, and then I sold kind of all of them as my old partner and I decided to split ways and go, and go our separate ways. But since then, the last 1,500 apartments or so, we haven't sold any, and the plan is to refinance them and keep them for the foreseeable future.
I think that's a really notable point. As a long-term developer and owner of multifamily, you do not want to cut off your nose despite your face. So if you go and underpark this and you build this today that it's underparked, you're going to suffer. You're going to suffer as a developer. So Seth has taken the approach and says, I'm not, he feels confident enough to invest tens of millions of dollars in a project and say, I'm very comfortable with this parking ratio because I'm going to own this long-term. There's a number of developers who do not build to hold. They build to sell these, so it's not their problem when these complaints come up in the future. So I think that's something else to know is that this project is for a long-term owner. However, the, in the event that there is an issue in the future, we can all recognize that there's plenty of additional land here that parking could be added. The last point that Seth had shared with me, and I think is important to note, is also not only how many parking spaces, but is, what is the location of the parking spaces in proximity to each unit? And if you look at the site plan one more time and you say, okay, where's the parking and where is it? It's right where the buildings are and also at the amenity center. And so that was very important, is the parking distribution to the location of the buildings. So with that being said, Seth, if you don't have any other additional comments, I would like to open it up to the council testing questions of, of any of us, as well as our engineers, Barrett Blackburn and Whitebone as well here this evening.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Yes, I will be happy to recognize council members for questions at this time. And this time I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
I'm just one question. I understand and appreciate the explanation and changing trends in apartment dwellers, but I do have one question, and that is if an individual, someone living singly in one of those apartments, one bedroom, had two friends coming to visit them, where would those two friends park their cars?
Well, generally, and our plan would be, we would not have assigned parking spaces, so the friends would be able to park wherever they want.
So the friends would be able to park wherever they want. We really find, you know, the, when places go to assign parking spaces, it's because they don't have enough parking spaces. And we feel with this ratio, we should be, we should be fine. We're fine in our other communities with this ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Vance?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
No questions, sir.
Okay, Mr. Dellinger?
A few questions. The first one related to this long-term hold, are you all utilizing opportunity zone tax credits on this property or this development?
We are not.
Okay. My other question really, well, one of my other questions relates to this preservation of open space. And I'm curious, because there's virtually 100% tree coverage on this property, yet you're only able to maintain 13%. What's the compelling need to cut down all those trees in exchange for actual clear, clear cutting and open space?
And the definition that town, that the town ordinance uses, I'm sorry.
You could leave, you could leave the trees and achieve the same thing, right?
We are leaving the trees. I think that's kind of the, maybe what's misleading on that is that we're, we're really only cutting down the trees. Kind of if you look at this, at this part of the site plan, where you see the dash line that circles the buildings in the pond, those are your clearing limits. And so that's really what we're cutting down. And even that won't be 100% clear cut, but the, you know, kind of almost, not all, but almost all the area heading towards 401 would remain as trees. And our interest would be to, to leave them as trees. And what I like to do in situations like this is limb up the branches and clear out the small caliper trees to make it a really walkable type of area. But yeah, we're leaving, we're leaving a ton of trees.
Other question is, is more of, again, one of my other questions, a major area of concern is I'm, I have a lot of hesitation with evaluating this project and not evaluating the southern part of the project at the same time. Is there, what's the reason for bringing them separately before council when both are going to interplay with regards, especially to Catty Road?
Well, I would just say that we are not the developer for the other parcel. The meaning Comet is not the developer, the builder for the other parcel. And I just think it's trailing behind in the approval process with, with Cambridge on what goes in there next. Jay, maybe I should let you handle that one.
That's exactly right. I think our approach, Councilman Dellinger, thank you for the question, is to really methodically address development. And that is not to push things, rush things, or not think through things and how they're developed, which is exactly why we were able to come before your board last month with the Costco plan, commercial plan across the street. This is the next component. And then we will be following suit with the Catty, what we call Catty South. That is a little bit of a less intense development than this. It would, our plan there is for some retail as well as some townhome, maybe a for sale product there. The other thing that we're working through, and Jeff mentioned this in his presentation, is there's a lot of sewer capacity concerns in the downstream pump station that Raleigh Utilities owns and controls. So we are working to figure out and determine, we have another call with Raleigh Utilities, exactly how much additional sewer capacity is available in that downstream pump station. So we don't want to bring before your board plans that cannot be served with adequate utilities. So we have been assured by Raleigh Utilities that projects last month, as well as this one, can be served. And we do not know 100% exactly on the capacities which would modify that site plan. I know that's a long answer and a very complicated one to a lot of moving parts. But did I answer your question?
You did. It's a very, it's a good answer. I guess it still gives me concern around the development and improvement of Catty Road throughout the entire length of it, abutting this property in the southern side. Because to me, it doesn't make sense to, if, let's say you can't rectify or get the capacity for sewage, you need to develop that other parcel. I'm concerned with having only half a Catty Road, you know, brought up to standard. So I'll pass on to someone else for another question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Singleton, I believe, is the one council member I haven't yet recognized on this.
Yes, sir. Mr. Priest, I cannot recall the answer to the question when we, I believe, conditionally resoned this back last summer. On this property at the intersection of Catty Road and US 401, there is a lot there or distinguished on here in a lighter color than the natural space, community amenity area shown. Is that a separate lot that can be developed or something else? I cannot remember. Or is that, I don't, I don't remember what that lot may or may not be for.
Sure, good question. Right now, it is a different color because that area will have some grading happen during this project. And so it's shown there to show that we're not counting that as open space. We don't have any plans and I'll let Seth answer that right now.
Yeah, no, this, this, this is the finished product if we're able, you know, if we're approved, this is what will get built on that site. That light colored area would not get constructed.
Okay. It is zoned the same, all this, everything in here is zoned the same, correct? That's the same zoning as what was proposed tonight, correct?
Yes, the whole, the whole property is zoned enough too.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. I think I've covered all of the council members at this point in time. So if anybody has a follow-up question, Mr. Priest, I'm assuming though you've recognized the persons you wanted to recognize for your presentation, is that right? Anybody else?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, sir. All right. Well, thank you for the able presentation. At this point, I will either see if Ms. Gibson is aware of anyone else who wants to speak on this issue, or I'll ask the question in general if we know of persons otherwise who wish to speak at this time. Okay.
Mayor, I'm not aware of any.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Priest, unless you have other presentation, I think that pretty well wraps up this particular hearing. And I'm going to close the hearing and ask the council for a motion on this matter. Okay, so I would.
Mr. Mayor, you looking for a motion for the Randvilles Apartments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm moved that the council accept the staff statements regarding plan consistency in section seven of this report as our own and found the application meets the 10 permit criteria, section 3.1, 4.10, and therefore approve CUP-SP-20-09, the Randvilles Apartments with the four conditions to be listed on the permit that will be prepared by staff.
Second. Okay, thank you, Mr. Singleton. And Mr. Matthews, I believe, was seconded the motion. So unless there are any final questions or comments, I will ask clerk to call the roll on the vote.
House Member Dellinger?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No.
House Member Matthews?
Aye.
House Member Singleton?
Aye.
House Member Vance?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The motion is passed on a vote of four to one. And this is approved. I want to thank Mr. Priest for your able presentation and all of your other experts who testified. We wish you well as, as this project moves forward and hope it'll be a good addition to our area here, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Priest, I again want to thank you for your detailed PowerPoint presentations. I mentioned it at the last, the retail presentation you made last month, and also when you did the conditions resoning, your presentations are spot on. They're very detailed and I'll speak for myself. I appreciate the detail that you go into in presenting your, your projects.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. You can take that as a good compliment, Mr. Priest. I'm not sure I hear Mr. Singleton make those comments often, but I know it's well-meaning, so we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. You have a very good day very soon for the next.
Okay, good, thank you. And a good night to you all. We've still got some more business to conduct.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that covers all of our public hearings. So I'm moving to the next item on the agenda, which is item under New and Old Business. Let me find my place here. I believe item two is the next item, facility naming public comment. This is an item that, well, as it notes there at our December meeting, the council discussed renaming the chambers after former mayor Ronnie Williams and keeping with the town facility naming policy. And so this public hearing was designed for any comments from the public on this matter. But as we do that, I will recognize Town Manager Rodney Dickerson for any further presentation on this matter. Mr. Dickerson?
Mayor Marshburn, members of council, as you stated, this is a follow-up process from the December 22nd. You, Mr. Mayor, had appointed a committee to look into recommendations of how we could honor former mayor Ronnie Williams. And as we did our work and thought about some of the ways we could honor him for his over 30-plus years of service to the town of Garner, representing the town on various committees, being an alderman, a council member, being a mayor. One of the things we thought would be, becoming of his service would be naming the council chambers. So as part of our, our policy, it requires a public comment. And so that's where we are now. And we do have support from the family.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. And so I have not been contacted with, by anyone who indicated they wanted to speak this evening. Ms. Gibson, have you been notified of anyone on this matter?
No, sir, I have not.
Okay. I will at this time ask council members if there's any further comment or question that anyone would like to ask at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor, I would point out that I think we may have mentioned this when we talked in December, but a couple of things that was discussed by the committee, and of course, nothing's set in stone, is that as you approached the council chambers down the hallway, it says council chambers. And I think it was discussed putting one mayor Williams name up there. And then in the council chambers itself, also having some type of signage noting it was named for Mayor Williams, but also having an information panel, I think maybe a smaller version of the ones that we see on the first and second floor of town hall, which were done with the, the glass panels and the pictures, having one of those or something similar to that in town hall with, with Mayor Williams' picture on it and also some information about his, his service to the town of Garner and the numerous roles that he played. So that was what was discussed. And again, the council can, you know, choose to do that or do something else, but that was, that was what was discussed at one time. So that way people will know when they enter the council chambers, it's the Ronnie S. Williams Council Chambers. And also it will be noted inside the chambers itself also.
Okay, yes, thank you for those excellent points, Mr. Singleton. And I would say to council that I'm going to ask formally for a vote approval to move ahead. And to Mr. Singleton's point, I think the committee maybe can get back together with what I would call some logistical details and, and sort of fleshing out some of the things Mr. Singleton mentioned and bring back to council for final approval exactly what we expect to do in chambers and, and ask your final approval on that. So if council has any other comments or questions on this matter, I'd be happy to hear them at this time. Okay, hearing none. Then I would entertain a motion, and thank you, by the way, I commend council. I think this is an excellent way to recognize a person who gave a lot of service and most everybody here knows him well. I had the privilege to serve with him for 12 years as a council member, and I think this is a, is a great way to honor his memory. So we'll ask for a motion from council to, to approve the action that has been recommended with a final recommendation to be coming after the committee meets again.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, properly moved and seconded. Any question? Hearing none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll. If you approve, please say aye. Or disapprove.
House Member Dellinger?
Aye.
House Member Matthews?
Aye.
House Member Singleton?
Aye.
House Member Vance? House Member Vance?
I believe you muted yourself. Yeah, thank you.
And Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. So it proved, it's approved unanimously and we will, we'll get the committee back together and hopefully bring some, some final presentation on the matter and some cost estimates and so forth for what we propose to do. Okay? All right, thank you. The next item of business under this section of our agenda, I believe, is a second quarter budget update. And be pleased to recognize Mr. Mike Franks from Budget, Special Projects Manager. There he is. Mr. Franks, we cannot hear you yet, or I cannot.
It would help if I unmuted myself. I apologize for that.
Yeah, much better. We hear you now, sir.
All right. So my first presentation tonight is on the second quarter budget update. I provided our first quarter budget update several months ago, and this is in response to the uncertain times that COVID-19 presented in terms of putting together the budget. So we came back and said we would provide quarterly updates. This is the second one of those. So I'm going to provide overview on current financial trends, provide a recommendation, and also I would welcome discussion throughout the presentation. For just the history, again, as part of the budget, we did, based on the uncertain nature of COVID-19, we prepared a worst-case budget, which included significant expenditure revenue projections. Council and staff agreed the quarterly updates we provided to make any necessary adjustments. So basically, because we went worst case, if things ended up being better, or perhaps worse, what adjustments would be needed. And as part of current update, we did reach out to departments to determine if any adjustments were required. So we have factored in kind of what department's needs are, their one-term requirements, one-time requirements. So this is a summary that provides a review of the current revenue trends. So a couple of big wings here, the sales tax numbers, the books that we recommended or what we thought was going to be included in the budget. We are currently projecting for an additional 1.85 million in sales tax and other taxes. And that is primarily just based on the fact that sales tax continues to grow at 7%, 8% above month over month from the prior year, and that's before COVID. So we are growing at the same rate, sales tax-wise, as we were pri, pre-COVID, which is just something nobody expected. This is being offset by decreases in programming fees and interest earnings or investment earnings. So programming fees is primarily perks and rec, and just a lack of programming there. And then investment earnings, the current interest rates are significantly lower than we originally anticipated. So we are seeing significantly less in terms of a benefit from our portfolio. In terms of expenditure trends, we are currently projecting $650,000, less than budgeted, a significant amount of that is perks and cultural resources. And that is based primarily on, again, the lack of programming. That department generally has a significant number of over the term staff to provide the programming and help out throughout the year. Those staff are not being hired based on the fact that they're not doing those activities. So there's a significant savings there. And then we have some, what I would call, miscellaneous savings in other departments that get us to the $650,000 number. the $650,000 number. So based on this, staff does have some recommendations based on the fact that we are positive in revenue and seeing lower expenditures. Staff is recommending that council consider the approval of full-time public safety IT position. This position is currently being performed by a part-time employee that is scheduled to depart on June 30. So that was something that council approved a couple of years ago. Primarily helped the police department with their, some of their IT requirements. That part-time staff member is scheduled to leave June 30, and the workload associated with performing IT functions with just police at this point, married a full-time position, that would obviously increase even more with a merger. And this would allow also with the approval of this for several months of knowledge transfer, which is critical for this position. So because that person, the incumbent, is leaving on June 30, if we were going to be able to approve a position in the next couple of weeks, months, that would allow the IT department to then hire that person and spend some time with the incumbent to make sure that they are aware of what's going on. And the FY21 cost would be approximately $30,000. It could be absorbed by the IT department based on some staff departures, so there would be no current year costs. However, the net recurring cost would be approximately $30,000. So there'd be two adjustments here. We'd be putting additional money into the IT department to cover the costs of the new IT position, but we also have some savings in the police department because they currently house the part-time position. So that position would be going away, so we would just be covering the difference, which would be approximately that $30,000. In addition, staff recommends the approval of net zero funding adjustment associated with the pay equity study. This would be something we bring back to you on the consent agenda, and it would be just moving the funding around. As you recall, we put together the adopted budget. We did not have the final information on the study. There were ultimately some changes. So based on those changes, staff would be, staff is, we're going to need to move some money around essentially with no new cost. It would just be moving it between departments. That'd be, that would require a budget amendment. So if that, I'll take any questions that council has on the revenue expenditure trends and also staff's recommendations.
Okay, thank you, sir. And just so I'm clear, you are recommending or asking council to go ahead and approve this full-time public safety position. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir, to at least provide feedback on your overall thoughts of the positions' need and give staff some direction in terms of what additional information would be required for you guys to finalize your decision. Obviously, this is just a high-level overview, but any information you would need to make a final decision.
Okay, sir. All right, council, I'll ask you to weigh in on the information received from Mr. Franks. Let's start with Mr. Matthews.
I don't have any questions right now, Mr. Mayor. I'm interested in what some other input might be.
Okay, Ms. Behringer?
I have no questions. Good, clear presentation. Easy one, understood.
Okay, Mr. Singleton?
So is staff looking for a motion on this converting from a part-time full, full-time position tonight, or is it coming on the consent agenda? I know with, with who we have there now leaving June 30, you want to move on this sooner than later. And I didn't know a consent agenda would be two more meetings, excuse me, two more weeks. And I don't know if that's what you're looking. I, I think it's, you know, incumbent to realize that police is about forty percent of our full-time employees, maybe more, but the IT involved in that every police vehicle has cameras, the police have body cameras, they have computers inside the, every vehicle, plus the way they enter all violations, tickets and so forth and information. They're, they're, I know the whole town hall's IT-heavy, but what police technology, which has evolved and will continue to evolve in that, is a, it's a full-time job for someone managing that. So I had no trouble. I don't know what direction. Do you want us to wait for a consent agenda, or do you want us to make a motion to ask you to move forward and bring us more information? What, what is staff looking?
I would think it makes sense if you guys are comfortable going and just going ahead and going with the motion route as opposed to waiting until the consent agenda. But I will also defer to the town manager, or the assistant town managers, if they have a different opinion.
I, I think it would be appropriate if the council is in favor, because with the departure of the drifting part-time employee June the 30th, we would, we do not want to see a lag in this position. So it will take time to advertise and interview and do those type of things. And we'd like to have that in, in place before the end of the, the year.
Okay, I was just going to say, yeah, I appreciate what I believe you're ready to do. If you will, let me, let me recognize the other two council members to, to weigh in on this, and then we will certainly consider a motion at that time.
I will. Everybody spoke. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Vance, any comments, observations you'd care to make, sir?
Well, it just appears that the need is there. Don't have any objection to the recommendation or request.
Okay, and Mr. Dellinger?
I don't have any objection to that request. I do have one question that it might have gotten answered at the last quarterly update, and I don't remember what it was. What is the explanation on that eighty percent decrease in investment earnings, that negative $350,000? Like, can, how is that broken out? I'm having a hard time understanding how our investments have shriveled from our projections like that.
So I think we were just overly, being overly optimistic in terms of what we thought interest rates were going to be. And that's the primary factor. I would defer to Mr. Beck if he has any thoughts on it as well. But, I mean, I think we just, we were overly conservative with sales tax in terms of thinking that it would go down and didn't fully recognize the fact that our interest earnings would go down dramatically. They've been at this level before in the past, but it's been several years of strong growth. And I just don't think we foresaw as staff that it would be quite this traumatic in terms of.
I'm just, I guess I'm just looking at, you know, at the actual in 2019, 2020 of 534,000, and the current estimate for this year is 100,000. So I'm just curious, is that all just interest earnings on, on money we have in the bank and the interest rates implemented to absolutely near nothing? Is that what that is?
It is. Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's just cash sitting not earning because of all the cuts. Okay, okay.
Longer getting good interest rates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Believe everybody has weighed in. So you've heard the request or Mr. Franks' explanation and from the town manager in regards to the preference to, to go ahead and get this full-time position, make it available. So unless there are other discussions, I will call for a motion at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct staff to change a part-time public safety IT position to a full-time public safety IT position effective as soon as they are a new employee.
Second. Okay, motion properly made by Mr. Singleton and seconded by Mr. Matthews. Any other comment? Before we vote, hearing none. Ms. Clerk, I will ask you to call the roll on this motion, please. Okay, we have a motion properly before. So Ms. Gibson, are you available? Are you there?
Muted right now, Stella.
She's taking the nine o'clock break, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Which will be next?
Did, did, did I hear her voice there somewhere?
Okay, Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Behringer?
Aye.
And Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes unanimously and is approved. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Franks. I know you have the next presentation and.
If I may say something real quick about the last item?
Okay.
That we will be bringing back some formalities as far as the position control. So back on probably consent, because that position is going to have to be placed on our paid plan and those type of things. So, so just wanted to let you know you will see some formalities associated with that in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I thought we already voted on that, so.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. I'm inclined to call a brief recess, even though Mr. Franks, I know, has a, another presentation to make. How, how long do you think that will take, Ms. Franks? I don't want you to rush necessarily.
Not extremely long. It's just going over next year's budget calendar and kind of giving a brief overview and sort of teeing up the next year's budget.
All right. Why, why don't we go ahead and let Mr. Franks finish his presentations, and then I will suggest to council that we will take a brief recess to let everybody be refreshed. So, Mr. Franks, if you will proceed at this time with the second item there.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, at the same time, we're reviewing the current year budget FY21. We're also starting the process of preparing for the FY22 budget. So here tonight, I'm going to give an overview, some background on what happened last year, just some high-level information on FY22, and then also ultimate calendar. An overview of budget challenges in the process, view some key dates, and have some discussions throughout. So FY21 review, we had the obviously significant uncertainty based on COVID-19. We utilized the multi-year budget to be the town's long-term financial outlook. So this was something we continued to expand upon, where we had a pretty basic model, and we added additional elements and really started to utilize that to really fully think through the next five years and how that service was going to ultimately impact that bond referendum and the operating needs, kind of putting everything together. We ultimately adopted a budget that included a tax rate of 49.71 per $100 assessed value, which was an increase of three, that's the revenue neutral rate. And the budget included funding for various initiatives, including public safety initiatives, of funding to implement the pay equity study, recurring funding for form of the public facilities, repair and maintenance, so the ability for us to maintain our current assets as we start to process a lot of new ones, and also one-time funding to prepare for the November 2021 bond referendum. And that was set aside so that we could do some additional analysis to figure out exactly how much things are going to cost, have some better cost estimates going into the referendum so that we could be better positioned to succeed in the future. FY22 outlook, and this is very preliminary. We have not yet received any estimates from Lake County about our real estate, and that is a chunk of it. But we do believe current baseline forecasts indicate that current revenue should be sufficient to cover some baseline requirements. Again, this is preliminary. We'll be refining in the coming months after we get some information from Lake County on real estate. We should be able to provide a much more detailed forecast of what we expect next year and future years. We do, however, anticipate that there'll be multiple competing priorities based on population growth and just pent-up demand. We had a variety of decision packages last year, funding requests for new positions that were not funded ultimately. So I would anticipate a variety of those to come back. And then we have increased workload associated with population increases. So you're seeing departments like police, parks, more serious service-oriented departments that are being impacted by the development activity that we started to see. So I would anticipate some additional growth there. In the FY22 process, we will continue to utilize the multi-year approach. We've utilized some of the processes of prior years. So I would anticipate that we continue to utilize that model as we go through the bond referendum, making sure that we're balancing needs of the current, current budget year as well as the future. We will focus hopefully on refining the forecast and the funding recommendations to make sure they align with council's long-term vision. As you may recall, last year, we had a couple of items that were pretty broad, focused on, you know, six positions in future years. We did not have a significant amount of detail. So part of the goal there is to be able to lay out in additional detail what we actually think are going to be needed in the future. And we will have to go back and forth on how much detail we're able to provide because things obviously do change, but we at least want to have some idea of what may come up in the future based on council's priorities. And as always is the case, the primary goal would be to adequately address current years while establishing a framework for the future. So just some high-level information on the budget process. Departments are tasked with providing a baseline budget. So that's all the things that they're going to need in this year's budget, just paper, training, various things along those lines. So there's, that's some bolts of what is required to operate their department, as well as a five-year staffing model and any significant five-year operating impacts for review. So basically, what's the big stuff coming up, personnel and operating, and then what do you need this current year? The town's budget team, which includes myself, budget manager, the deputy town managers, the town manager and the finance director, then review the operating budget, current year decision packages, as well as the revenue estimates to come up with a budget. And the multi-year request are reviewed as part of the multi-year budget as well. So more detail, departments enter based on funding requirements. It's the town's financial systems. They go ahead and are doing that currently, looking at what they need and entering all their information in. This allows the budget team and departments to review the current year requests, prior year actuals at the same time. So this was something that I highlighted in the past because we went to actually entering all that information. It's the town's financial system, which allowed us to have significantly more detail. It is a benefit, something that we will hopefully expand on in the future. And then the decision packages are also reviewed. Departments ranked based on established criteria. So there's a variety of different criteria that department heads had an opportunity to lay in on that we use to rate decision packages. And this is just a high-level overview of what the, the budget system pops out. So you can see on the left-hand side, various items, operating items. And then you can see the actuals. So what was actually occurred, what actually was spent, and then the current year budget, current revised budget, and the requests. So it allows you to have a single snapshot that makes it simpler to review the budget request. The multi-year budget in FY22, we'll continue to utilize recent trends, current projections to determine based on revenue expenditure growth. So for example, with sales tax, we were projecting a significant decline this year. Now we're experiencing growth. So something like that will have a fairly big impact on the multi-year budget. However, we'd also probably offset that with some interest earning decreases. So it's reevaluating everything based on the current climate and making these changes. Also use the multi-year staffing model, CIP and other knowledge to highlight upcoming issues. And as always, the goal would be to review future projects, initiatives, impact of operating budget. So the framework can be built that will hopefully ultimately set up a roadmap for success. With that, I will just go to the schedule. Try to keep it pretty high level in terms of the dates. So we have various dates where somebody will be presenting to council in terms of, for example, the first one's a CIP bond update, which will occur on the 26th, and then a variety of other, other dates, big ones for council to ultimately look at. One thing we've talked about, we felt worked a lot well last year, is having individual budget meetings with council members. So we have that highlighted for March 29th through April 2nd. That'd be an opportunity for staff to provide some input on what the budget was overall looking like. Get some one-on-one feedback from council. Using that information, we'd ultimately have to recommend the budget presented to council on May 3rd. We don't have a budget review all-day session planned just yet, but that would be another all-day-long session. We're going to continue with the Facebook Live event on the budget. We had some decent success with that last year. We want to continue. If that happened, it would give people as many opportunities as possible to comment on the budget. A public hearing in May on the 18th, and then ultimately, a council adoption recommended on the 7th of June. So if that, take any comments or questions on the process generally, the schedule, or any other things related to the FY22 budget.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Franks. Sure enough, high-level view of things here. Rather than formally polling council on this, I will ask, council members have particular questions for Mr. Franks, if he will speak up, and we'll see if we need to go around to everybody. Any questions from council? Okay, Mr. Franks, thank you, sir, for your, for your time. You must have done quite well. There were no questions.
I do have one. I have one. I just, before we get to the work session, before we get to the work session on the 26th, can we get kind of this bond update draft so that we kind of have an idea going in what that conversation is going to look like before we get to our work session?
Yes, I can have that. And then I think there's also potentially going to be some follow-up at your retreat. I would defer to the town manager and deputies or assistant town managers on that. So it'd be, you know, you guys having that information the 26th, and then maybe having some time to consider it, and then discussing it again at that retreat. So there will not be a, you know, it's not going to be a hard decision to make immediately.
Sure, thank you.
Sir.
Okay.
One question, my name is Mr. Mayor Michael. As you projected the sales tax to continue to increase, based on the information that we had in here, you've only received sale tax for, I believe, July, August, and September of last year for, for the, the first, the first quarter of, of, well, no, this, yeah, the first quarter of last year. That's all that you received sales tax number for, on correct?
We may have received October. I don't believe that we have, though, but.
But the projections are based off those percentage increases over what, what we budgeted for, that you have plugged that in here for the increase?
Yes, sir. We, yeah, with those projections, that's factored into the increase. And what we're ultimately seeing with sales tax. And what we're ultimately seeing with sales tax, and I think you're referring to the last presentation, is that a lot of the population hubs are actually being negative, more negatively impacted by COVID nineteen. So the Rawleys, the Durhams are being harder hit. And some of the smaller municipalities or rural areas are having pretty good growth. And the thought is that people are staying home and buying stuff in Garner or wherever they happen to live as opposed to stopping shopping at a grocery store. So that's what we're seeing and thinking is happening with. So it'll probably continue to allow COVID. And then we would expect it to, or I would expect it to continue to happen just based on overall growth in the town. So that's, that's my overall thought in terms of sales tax.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I have one quick question about the sales tax too. The the overage we're seeing now, is that based against the decreased expectation we had? Or is this in line with what we expected without COVID?
It's based on the decrease that we expected. Things are going as as if COVID never happens is essentially staying about the same growth rate.
Gotcha, that was, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay, council, you satisfied on this matter? Thank you again, Mr. Frank, for this presentation, and we look forward to hearing from you in the future. Okay, thank you. Okay, council, I'm going to suggest that we take a, our nine o'clock recess at this point in time and observe that since most of you, I think, are operating from a place that you're very familiar with, it shouldn't take you long to find what you need to find during the break rather than wander the halls of the town hall if you're finding those things. So I'm going to suggest that we, no more than ten minutes, if you can be back at least by that time, nine, that looks like nine twenty-five or so, and we will wrap up the rest of our agenda. So thank you all, and at this time, I'll declare a ten-minute recess. Okay, I'm going to declare that our recess is over and we are back in formal session and picking up on our, thank each of you for being prompt and timely, I appreciate that. We're now at the section on our agenda under item J, which is committee reports. And before I call on others, I will note that this maybe is what we call a semi-committee. Today, Ms. Behringer and I, along with the town manager, met with our school government facilitator to talk some about the upcoming retreat. And Ms. Behringer, you want to give any details on that just in regards to what's, well, I guess we're to give the dates, Mr. Manager, maybe you already sent those out, the proposed dates for our retreat and those you were going to send some more information after we get an agenda from the facilitator.
Yes, the dates right now proposed, and I think everybody's cleared it on their calendar, February the tenth and eleventh. Likely go about six hours on the tenth and roughly four hours or so on the eleventh. Still working out some of those details.
Okay, and obviously, this will be a virtual meeting, which will be unlike other retreats we've had. But that's the format it'll take this this time around, sure enough. So unless others have questions on that, I will ask, are there any other committee reports at this time? Okay, hearing none, I will recognize the town manager for his report to council.
Okay, Mayor, town council have a number of reports. You have your standard reports in there. Self for the Garner info, we failed to get that in your packet, so we will get a copy of that to you tomorrow. But we'll continue to work on those items. There's a financial report and a building activity report in there. One thing I wanted to mention is, you know, with COVID, we pivoted to having shows, GPAC at Home series, we call it, where we have artists perform and some perform live and we film it or either they may stream it from a remote location. Nevertheless, it's quality programming and something we want to continue to bring to our public. And on Thursday, the twenty first, we're going to have our own former Garner Chamber President Neil Paget is teaming with Mary Wilson for a tribute to Mahalia Jackson. I mean, yes, Mahalia Jackson. And so we're looking forward to that. There's going to be several other shows following that, probably following like every other Thursday or so. But just go online to the GPAC website and look at your calendar. But we're real excited about the show coming up on Thursday. Mary Williams is an adjunct professor, kind of a documentarian and storyteller adjunct professor at Duke. So we're real excited to have her teaming up with Mr. Paget on that. The other thing we have here at request of council member Behringer, and I don't know if she wants to cover anything on here, but you have in your packet a report, Fire Department twenty twenty about the numbers, is various stats on the Garner Fire Rescue Department and number of calls and some of just kind of pertinent information of how their year has gone, a number of responses, call volume is, oh, let me pause there and see if council member Behringer wanted to say anything about it before I go into any details or if you want to cover anything as a liaison.
Ms. Behringer, we can't hear you at this point.
You're on mute.
Trying to be quiet.
No, we can hear you, yeah.
Yeah, you're doing fine, Rodney. I think it's always helpful to have our actual facts in front of you about what is happening. You know, everybody thinks that in terms of the sirens and fire calls, but actually more of their calls are medical calls than anything else. And so it's good to see those numbers, see what they're doing, where they're working and to understand that they are truly working just about all the time. So I thought you would appreciate that information.
So just to throw out some of the information for our viewers. So the Garner Fire Rescue, they cover a population of sixty-four thousand seven hundred. So it's well beyond the Garner town limits. And as you know, they cover a lot of the surrounding unincorporated area. The call volume was fifty-five hundred. That included sixty-five structure fires, thirty-two vehicle fires, which keeps them busy, especially on the highway and the roads surrounding Garner. Brush fires and electrical calls, six hundred and ten traffic accidents. And as Mayor Pro Tim Behringer mentioned, a lot of their calls are as first responder medical calls, and they did almost twenty-eight hundred of those. So they spend a lot of time on response, but they also do some training and some things for prevention. So this information is available in the council member packet. So if you want to take a look at that, you can see how busy of a year it was for the fire department. All right, moving on from that, wanted to talk about, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rory Lance. He wanted to give you an update on one of the events from the Garner Parks and Rec Department.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Just wanted to let you all know that the Parks Department is thinking ahead to events, or at least what our traditional events would have looked like in the spring and summer and coming up with some alternatives instead. July third will still be the big one to figure out, and we're not quite ready for that conversation. But we do think it's just very unlikely that we would be able to do extravaganza in the way that we typically would. And so what we are proposing to do in the spring is capitalize a little bit on the success that we had with the drive-in movie that we did in the in the fall at Lake Benson Park. That went really well. And so we are proposing to do a monthly series that the spring, second Friday of the month, March, April, May and June, the drive-in movie series that would work, you know, similar to how it did in the fall. But like I said, that proved to be successful and pretty popular. And we think that's a good, you know, it's a good alternative. And particularly if we could go ahead and publicize the events, you know, further ahead of time, that it would be on a set schedule, we think we'll get real good turnout. So that's what we're, that's what we're proposing to do for the sort of, to take the place of extravagance and to give the residents of the town something to look forward to from a Parks and Rec standpoint over the next few months while we figure out what it will look like in the summer and beyond.
Okay, thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Manager, anything else?
So the other thing I want to remind you of is that the MLK presentation is still available online on our social media and our Facebook and YouTube platforms. And I want to thank the MLK Committee, want to thank Rick and Adam for all the good work they did in making that virtual program very successful. Some community members participated in that, the mayor, and it was a very good program. And I think it's, it's very well worth watching. So if you haven't watched it yet, go online and watch that. And that's it for my presentation.
Okay, anybody have a question for the town manager in regards to this report? Okay, hearing none. Attorney Jones, any report?
No, I'm going to give you my report during closed session this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. So I will go to council reports, and I'll start with Ms. Behringer.
Okay, I'm sorry, just a couple of things. There is, I believe the address is either is one oh two and one oh four or one oh four and one oh six West Garner Road. It's a duplex on the corner of West Garner Road and Penny Street. And the driveway off of West Garner Road into that property has no gravel in it. And so it's full of water and red mud and there's red mud all over the sidewalk. I did talk with Tony Beasley last week about it, but haven't heard back from him. But they need to contact the property owner and get that driveway, have some gravel put in it to stop that erosion and and the mud that people happen to walk in on the sidewalk over there. Second thing is, my memory serves me correctly, it's maybe even a couple of years ago by now, but we approved some new plannings, council will approve some new planning software. And I wanted to see if that had been implemented and what what the improvement was. I don't, I just remembered that our planning software was was out of date and that we did approve getting a new, I don't know what to call it, but a new program. And I wonder if we have done that yet.
Ms. Behringer, this is John, I can address that. No, we are, we've done part of the pre-work to evaluate that software. We've done some process mapping, trying to do that at the same time as the comprehensive plan was getting completed and then starting the UDO rewrite was just really too much for staff to take on at one time. So we've picked back up on trying to restart that project. We had a meeting two weeks ago or last week, rather. And so we've got monthly meetings scheduled to to work on that initiative now. The other thing we were doing as well was that Wake County and Raleigh were implementing software at the time you were approving that, and they both had some pretty severe challenges in getting that rolled out. So we're also taking some lessons learned from what they, a couple of other our peers who've had a more successful rollout that will be able to pattern some of that work after. So we're working on it, but we have not implemented the software yet.
Do you have a projected timeframe to get it in in place?
I don't, a lot of that's really going to depend on the amount of bandwidth that staff has because it's going to be fairly heavy in terms of staff having to pull away from their regular responsibilities to make sure that that we're developing the processes before we implement it. So I really don't have a good timeline until we understand more of of what some of those requirements are going to be.
All right, thank you, and that's all I have, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton, be happy to hear from you, sir.
I have nothing to do this time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Matthews, are you there?
I had caught Kathy's doing, nothing at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Vance? Mr. Vance, anything?
Yes, I would just say that the MLK virtual celebration, really enjoyed it, well, well done. And I was slightly concerned about the trash that I've noticing on the side of the roads lately. It appears that there's becoming a buildup of trash along several shovel thoroughfares, one seventy from timber, timber going toward Ran Road in that area. And just it's probably because of a lot of construction and another, a lot of travel and things of that nature. But just want to know if there is a way of of taking care of that, knowing that we have all these, all these activities going on such as construction, one of with the new housing developments, the things going on, a lot of trucks on the road, a lot of things are going around.
Okay, thank you, sir. And I might just mention maybe the staff. I'm wondering if we could perhaps make that a point of discussion at our closed session. I know of at least one and maybe two people who are just good citizens who, as they're out walking, they they take along with them trash receptacles and bags. And I know one gentleman who, he accumulates quite a bit of trash. And the question is, you know, where's a good place to leave those bags and so forth? So at any rate, I think that that general topic deserves some further discussion. Maybe, Mr. Manager, if we could just put that on for some further discussion at our, I'm going to suggest for our work session. So let me see, Mr. Dellinger, a report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the town manager and Sam Bridges and all of our county commissioners last week for being very responsive with regards to getting information on vaccines and that stuff. I know there's a lot of moving parts, but I want to commend them especially for reaching out to folks to make sure they know that Garner will help. However, we need to help to make sure we can facilitate that if the time comes. So there, that's it, all that information's in flux, but everyone seems to understand we really would like that in Garner. Also want to thank the Public Information Office and the Police Department. I had a constituent reach out to me about a week and a half ago, asking if we had a safe exchange spot for people who, you know, would meet people online to buy and sell things. And they posted, we have one in front of the police station. Posted that up and the police posted that up and it got a lot of feedback. So hopefully some awareness was raised with that. Also want to congratulate the Police Department and Choose Local and Small Y'all for the coats event they did this weekend. Really successful, I know we we threw a few coats in there, but that seemed to be really great. And also, let's see, I saw some work going out in the park over in JC. I didn't walk down there to see if it looks like they're putting in new equipment. So thanks for Parks and Rec and Public Works for doing that. I just reiterate what other folks have said about the Martin Luther King video. It's worth a watch, especially in these times. It's a good thing to look at. In that spirit, there have been a few municipalities in the sunsetting of HB one forty-two that have put forth town ordinances related to LBGQ nondiscrimination ordinances and policies. The NCready.org is the sort of website that's tracking that. But if if it would, you know, please the mayor and council, I'd like to have the town manager and law town attorney look at maybe drafting some language for us for a similar ordinance for LGBTQ nondiscrimination policies for the town. I think, you know, we're, we're, we kind of want to live what we are. I think we have a great community and I think it's a thing that we can really get behind as far as being an inclusive town and supporting all of our neighbors and making sure they have even symbolic protections, which hopefully that's all it would need to be in Garner. But if it pleased the council mayor, I'd love for the town manager and town attorney to look at some of the other ordinances that were drafted and kind of draft some for us to consider. I know there's a whole process for that, but and that's all I have.
Okay, yeah, and and in all that manner, that probably merits some some further discussion of moving forward on that. So perhaps that might could be an item for the the work session, I'm not sure, but. But let's, let's leave that open for a potential discussion at that time. Um, yeah, I think most of you have mentioned the things I want to mention. Certainly want to come in as Mr. Dellinger did, and maybe somebody else. The Police Department on their, I, I call it, what is it, coats for the calls or whatever, but did a tremendous job on that and the proper recognition. And I appreciate the, the message sent out, I believe, by Kyver, thanking many people who participated in that. Also, as it relates to, yeah, the COVID-19 and the vaccinations. I know we've sent out a public information from our PIO, which was good. There's still a lot of questions about that. Had the privilege of speaking to the chairman of county commissioners and personally asking him if there's a possibility of the town of Garner having some kind of a vaccination site here. I think he said he'd already heard from Mr. Dellinger. And so that, that's, that's on the table. He indicated he would try to get back to me on that. So a lot of people are interested in sites. I know there are places you can go online, I believe my wife did today, and many places are trying to schedule appointments, obviously. So I'm sure the town, as we receive additional information, will, will push that on out. So keep a look on your social media and other platforms that you use for information about the town. With that, I believe that's all I have. Thank you, council. This is our first virtual meeting for, since we had some earlier. Think we'll need to continue these for a little while, but we will be constantly reevaluating when circumstances relating COVID-19 might merit some loosening of the rules. But it's too early just yet, I believe. Um, so with that, I believe we finished our regular agenda. We do have at least one closed session. Uh, so having finished council reports, I will entertain a motion for us to go into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, pursuant to NC General Statute, Section 143-318, that 11, Subset A, Subset 3, to consult with the town attorney regarding litigation in Section 143-318-11, Subset A, Subset 5, to discuss possible real estate acquisition and the town's negotiating position regarding such real estate.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Sock it.
Okay, Ms. Gibson, would you call a roll just on this, I guess?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Vance?
Aye.
Councilmember Behringer?
Aye.
Councilmember Dellinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is approved, and so I will declare that we will go into closed session. And we, if council will be at ease until we can receive notification from our tech people as to when we're ready to. Okay, I declare that we're back in open session. The council went into closed session to consult with our town attorney and receive information regarding litigation. No formal action is taken at this time. We also heard from town staff regarding possible real estate acquisition and the town's interest in possibly pursuing that. And gave staff some instruction, but no formal action was taken in that regard at this time. So with that, I want to thank the council for your good work tonight. It's been kind of a long night, but accomplished a lot. And so unless anybody has anything else for the good of the council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, moved and properly seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And there is no opposition. So again, declare our meeting adjourned, and we'll see you at our closed session later this month. Thank you all for your good service.